All right, and with that, the time is now 7:31, so I will call this July 7th meeting of the Yardley Borough Council to order. Just give me a moment, I'm gonna mute everyone and ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ms. McLean, if you could proceed with our roll call.
Sure. Ms. Thompson?
Present.
Ms. Siegel-Morris?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Brea?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Berry?
Present.
Mr. Finer?
Here.
Thank you.
All seven members of council are present, that is a quorum. We're also joined this evening by Mayor Harding, I see our Chief Kelly on the call, borough engineers, borough manager, and Solicitor Mr. Klosser. Moving on to community announcements, just two things I wanted to note that are unfortunate, but not surprising, two cancellations of fairly large borough events this year. Harvest Day and Beer Fest have both been canceled this year. And at this time, if any members of council have any items they would like to share under community announcements, please chime in.
Hi, I've been working with Liz Young at Common Reader to put together a social justice reading group, and we'll be having a focus group soon, and we're trying to enlist a few people from the Peace Center to work with us on that.
Excellent, so let us know when you have a date, and we can hope that goes well.
Thank you.
Any other announcements from council?
Yeah, David, I'll just chime in with the Friends and Mary Yardley Footbridge are just coordinating efforts to fundraise for that bridge. We're creating signage, we'll be out and about asking for donations, so we're reaching out to publications, and you can donate now at the Friends of the Canal, and we'll kind of put more information out, we're meeting tomorrow, and kind of finish the fundraising plan tomorrow, but that project is up and underway.
All right, excellent, so certainly everyone can look out for that, we do have some money to raise. All right, so if there are no other announcements from council, we can move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. Just a bit of technical housekeeping reminder to our participants that if you wish to be acknowledged, to please make use of the raise hand feature, so if you have joined through a laptop or through the app for Zoom, you can do that through the Participants tab or the Participants button at the bottom of your screen, you should see from there a place to raise your hand. If you have dialed in, which I don't think anyone has tonight, you can do that by hitting star nine. So this is the portion of the meeting where members of the public may address council on items which do not appear on the agenda. If you wish to address council for one of our agenda items, you will be given an opportunity to do so during the discussion or consideration of that item. Members of the public are wished to, are asked to give their name and address before speaking. And with that, I saw Ms. Perlmutter first, so we'll unmute you, and go ahead, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Dawn Perlmutter, 18 West College. I'm not sure if my question is going to be, if it's under the police chief's special events discussion. I had a few questions for Chief Kelly regarding the June 19 protest. Should I, is that coming up under his report, or should I do that now?
Let's, the special events is actually looking at a potential future ordinance, so let's do that piece now, if you ask your questions to me, and then I'll defer that to Chief.
Okay, I just had a few questions. One was, how much did it cost to have the officers and the officers from other towns for the crowd control? And if, whatever that number is, is it coming out of the Yardley PD's regular budget, or did we need to request funding for it? I had just, some other questions were, when the protesters didn't stay on the sidewalk or any tickets given? And were businesses and residents notified of the event? And if they weren't, why not? And were permits required? And if they weren't, why not?
Okay, just sort of give a little bit of a statement on top here, which is that, you know, as I mentioned before, one of the items we are looking at is the borough's ordinance that would surround future events like this, to put a little bit of clarification and additional requirements should events be planned. So we will discuss this a little more when we get that agenda item, but at this time, Chief, if you have anything you would like to add for part of this, I don't know if we have all those answers handy, so if not, we can certainly follow up on them, but if you have anything off the top of your head. Sorry, you're still muted there.
Quickly, I can go down a few things. Number one, the MERC team, the Municipal Incident Response Team, we do not pay for. That comes out of their funding, so the police officers from out of town did not come out of our budget. The budgetary expenditure from our town, I do not have handy right now. Whether the source, I do, we're paying for that unless we receive reimbursement from Pima, which is likely, we're gonna make that application. So right now, we don't know who's funding that, most likely it will be reimbursed. There were no charges filed, and there was no permit required.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The other hand I see up is Mr. Applebaum.
Hey, Mr. Applebaum's my father, but that's okay. I wanted to just take a second and tell you about the success of the experience Yardley/Yardley Historical Association's latest placemaking event, which is called Yardley, The Way We Were. I'm sure many of you have seen the signs around town with historical photos of buildings dating as far, the photos dating as far back as the mid-1800s of buildings that, of course, date back practically to the beginning of town. I was just pulling some numbers from Facebook, and with my latest posting, we have reached well over 20,000 people with hundreds of comments, and what I'm particularly proud of is that not only have we reached this many people, but with the hundreds of comments, many of them are coming from out of the area and out of state of people who have either grown up here or lived here at one time, and so we're spreading the good word, and we're gonna continue with this program until August 2nd, and I'll be able to give you an update, but I can tell you that it's one of the few things I've ever done where no one's complaining. So, all good.
Thank you, David, and thank you for all the work that went into that. I have to chuckle there because certainly no one can guarantee.
Yeah, well, you know what our lives are like, right?
So, thank you for all that went into that, they do look great around the borough.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other hands raised, and I'll just give it one more minute, if anybody else would like to make public comment, now is the time. Going once, filling twice, and hearing none, we will move on to item number six on our agenda, which is consideration of today's consent agenda. Contains our minutes from last time, our bills list from today, and there are five certificates of appropriateness. So before we continue, does any member of council have an objection to the consent agenda being considered in its entirety?
Just a quick question, do the certificates include even the most recent ones? Because I know there was a couple that came in recently.
Paula, can you?
Yes, they're all in there, all five of them. I sent those in an email Monday, yesterday, I guess, when I got in.
Okay, so the five includes those, okay.
The five includes those, yes.
Then I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Great, so the motion's made by Mr. Berry, seconded by Ms. Thompson for adoption of today's consent agenda. Any questions or comments from council?
Can I just clarify my motion, that it's all as approved by?
By her.
Yeah.
Yes.
As approved.
Yes, as written.
Yeah.
Any other further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries 7 to 0. Moving on, our next item is Chief Kelly's report.
Thank you, sir. First item I have is monthly statistics for June 2020. In June, we handled 713 calls for service, issued two parking tickets, issued 57 traffic citations, we issued one non-traffic citation, investigated six motor vehicle accidents, and made no arrests. The second item I have is the introduction of the auxiliary police ordinance. I know we've been talking about this since 2019, but we are ready to go, we have a draft ordinance from the Solicitor, and quickly I'll go over some of the benefits to this program. It's a low-cost, free labor force multiplier, where we'll have labor consistent with our four core values, our mission, our vision statement, under the supervision of Yardley Borough. It would increase transparency with the public, and I think I can, it doesn't need to be said at this time, but transparency and relationship building with the public has never been more important, so this would allow us to bring some of our citizens in as volunteers and increase our transparency to everyone. We have safer special events by expanded use of trained personnel in traffic control, pedestrian control, and in public outreach. As you know, currently, we don't have enough personnel when we do major parades, we use police line tape in a lot of areas, the auxiliary police would allow us to cover a lot more of those posts, and we would have the use of specialized skills that the auxiliary police officers would bring, such as female auxiliary police officers searching female prisoners, any special skills such as carpentry or vehicle repair, any special skill that they would bring to the table. So that is the reasons for the ordinance, and I know you've had the ordinance to review. Do you want me to go on to item three, or do you want to stop there for consideration?
Let's stop here for consideration, so I guess at this time I'll ask if there are, go right into it, if there's a motion from any member of council on this item.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to advertise?
Yes, motion to advertise.
Okay. Do we have a second? All right, great, so a motion was made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson to advertise the auxiliary police ordinance. We'll start with council, are there any questions or comments?
I think it's a great idea, and I think it's, I appreciate the chief for coming up with creative ways to make better use of our limited resources, and it's, I can't think of a better community in which to incorporate this type of thing than this community, where so many people want to be active and involved.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council?
Just a question about process, so this will get advertised, and then it will be up for adoption at the next council meeting? After it's advertised, and people can comment, is that correct, or?
I defer to Mr. Klosser there.
Yes, correct, I mean, the timing will depend on when we can get the advertisement into the newspaper as to whether it'll be the next meeting or the meeting after that, but we'll make sure council is aware of the schedule, but at that point, it would be up for adoption.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else from council on this item? Seeing none, we'll turn it over, questions for the public? Ms. Perlmutter, I see your hand up.
I just have a few questions for the chief. Will this be limited to Yardley Borough residents, or, because a lot of people, you know, well, is there any limitations?
Yes, the draft ordinance limits it to not Yardley Borough residents, but to include Yardley Borough and our surrounding municipalities.
Okay, and will they be trained by, they'll receive training? Now, they're not sworn officers, right? Will they be sworn?
They are not sworn, no. They will take an oath, but they have, they will not carry powers of police officers.
So they won't have weapons and badges?
That's correct.
Okay. And how many are you thinking of? Or is it just a specialty kind of thing, when you need certain?
The membership is capped at 12.
Oh, okay. And it's all volunteer, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have any other questions or comments from the public regarding this ordinance? Great, seeing none, I will call a question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries 7 to 0. All right, Chief, on to item C.
Item C is special events change to our process, it's to authorize our Solicitor to explore the creation of an ordinance or modify the ordinance we currently have. We found out during some of the recent protests that are, we have a robust special events process that was passed by council on May 7 of 2019 and written by Wes, and it's extremely comprehensive, but we found the vulnerability is there's nothing in the ordinance that requires those special events packets to be instituted under circumstances. So what this ordinance would allow is strengthening our borough ordinance to mandate the use of the special events package when someone is going to close a street. We found a very similar ordinance already on the books in New Hope Borough, and we're prepared to refer that to our Solicitor for review, modification, and then presentation to council for possible advertising.
Thank you, Chief, so I think at this point, what would be in order is a motion from council to authorize our Solicitor to research and draft this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Ms. Siegel-Morris and seconded by Mr. Ross to authorize our Solicitor to draft a sample ordinance, sorry, to draft the ordinance regarding special events. Are there any discussion from council? Any discussion or questions from the public? Right, hearing none, I'll call a question, all the, oh, sorry, Mr. Goodati, I see your hand up there.
Yes, thank you. But just quickly, would this ordinance affect the Memorial Day parades that, you know, carry every year? Or would there be some exemptions for them?
The current, the current procedure already affects the Memorial Day parades, so this should not have much of an impact on it, they're already following the special event process voluntarily.
Including the insurances that are required?
Yes, I believe so, Wes could probably answer that better, I think I saw him here.
I'm just wondering whether there would be an extra expense for the parades for an insurance policy? Thank you.
Wes, do you know if they've traditionally provided insurance?
You're on mute, Wes.
They have not, it's been split between the two municipalities, being that the parade starts in Lower Makefield.
Okay, so no, this shouldn't, anything we're doing now would continue, but this would require everyone to go through the process.
Thank you.
All right, are there any additional questions, public or council, on this item? Mr. Applebaum, go ahead.
I think he froze.
I think he froze too, I'm gonna give him a minute to see if he unfreezes.
He might be asking, wow.
I feel better now, much better. Listen, this is the first I'm really hearing about this, but I wanted to ask, why would anyone not want insurance for their event? And I guess I'm asking a rhetorical question, because I just heard that the Memorial Day Parade may not have insurance. I don't know if you can answer that question, but it just seems, I don't understand.
Why would anyone not, I guess the quick answer is they wouldn't want insurance to save money, but Wes isn't, from what I heard Wes say, the Memorial Day isn't short, it's just picked up by the municipalities out of longstanding tradition.
That's correct, we've never forced it upon two organizations that sponsor the parade. We've never held the parade up for any reason either.
Okay, so no event is mandated to supply insurance?
That's not correct. If you are using a borough asset, you are required to provide insurance.
But not the state highway?
We have not enforced it for the parade.
Well, not the state highway?
I'm not following your question.
Well, the road is not a borough asset, right? It's a, it's, and dot? So I just want to make sure I understand. What would you, what do you categorize as a borough asset other than a property?
It's probably easier for me to answer by saying that we have required insurance for, I believe, every event other than antique, which no longer happens, because it was solely on their own property.
Okay, well, thank you for your answer.
Mr. Applebaum.
David, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
That kind of sparks some questions. So for, under this plan, and I know it still has to be drafted, but is it anticipated for an event to get the permit, that it needs to, A, have insurance, B, be given enough time, I think three weeks, and then what, C, the council approves it? What's, who does the approval?
All special events are approved by council, I don't know about the time being three weeks, I know there is a mandated time where you have to file ahead of time, and council has the ability to waive the cost for police, council has the ability to waive the insurance on a case-by-case basis, that's always been the procedure.
Okay, thanks.
The procedure's not changing, just the part of the ordinance that mandates that we follow the procedure does, that they present a package to you for consideration, if that makes any sense.
If the ordinance is?
Correct, if the ordinance is written, advertised, and then passed.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to offer a point of clarification, we're bringing this up after we had a few protests in the borough, and this would absolutely not preclude protests from happening without notice to the borough if they so choose on the sidewalks. What we are trying to protect against is events in the street where people are put in harm's way, or the borough is put in a liability situation, so it's very finely pointed towards that, that's my understanding anyway.
That is my understanding also.
That's a good point, thank you for that clarification. And then, Ms. Perlmutter, I see your hand up.
Yes, in regard to what Caroline just said, I, why isn't it pointed toward these protests that aren't staying on the sidewalk? I mean, businesses weren't even notified of that last protest, they didn't follow the law, it's a state road, and I think that if you're going to do this, that it's a great idea, but it should absolutely include the types of protests that have just happened, because that's the problem.
That's not quite what I said, I said that it wouldn't preclude protests that remain on the sidewalk, we're trying to keep people safe when they do enter the street, and in all these instances, we were given assurances that the protests would not enter the street, and of course, that didn't happen, so we are trying to protect in the future, give ourselves a little more teeth to enforce not entering the street.
Well, there were no tickets given, that's one way to add teeth to it, also just to tell people to get back on the sidewalk.
That occurred, Dr. Perlmutter, where we turned to the sidewalk on the June 19 protest.
Oh, okay.
As far as ticketing 1,000 people, that's just an impossibility.
I understand, which is exactly why I think this ordinance, to have people have to have insurance prior to one of these protests, it serves two purposes, it not only protects the businesses, it also gives people notice that they're coming in an official way, because nobody had noticed about this last Juneteenth one, businesses.
I don't believe that to be true either, I believe the borough manager made notifications to a lot of the businesses along South Main Street.
I wasn't notified, and I'm a business, I mean, there were a number of people that I told who had no idea.
Ma'am, I said along South Main Street, that's where the.
Well, I can tell you, Dreyfus Opticians is right on South Main Street, the vault didn't know until I told them, so.
The vault knew, because we had conversations, ma'am.
So, sorry, I'm just gonna jump in here, because I don't want to relitigate what took place in the past, I know that businesses were notified, you know, if they didn't listen to their phone messages or open the letters, or, you know, however that communication is delivered, you know, sometimes things are lost in that fashion, but the borough did know about that protest before it happened, and we took the appropriate steps that we needed to notify those that might be affected.
Why did they require a permit?
In, this problem, we're gonna, we're gonna move on here now. Again, this ordinance that we are drafting at this point, right, several steps till it would be in place, is designed to build out the procedures around events like this in the future. Discussions with our Solicitor have made us aware that, you know, we need to be careful with being overly restrictive, because the right to protest is, of course, in the First Amendment, the Constitution, so if we do anything that's too strict, that is going to be a problem. You know, so at their core, public demonstrations of this nature are allowed, and we are looking at what restrictions we can legally put in place that are designed at keeping everyone safe.
Yes, Councilman Brea, this is what I do for a living, for the past month, I have been training.
I'm gonna move on from the public comment.
While you're trying to silence me, I'm not, I'm just trying to.
I'm not silencing you, there's a normal time limit.
I understand that demonstrations are allowed, but if you're putting in an ordinance, it should really, I'm not saying not allow demonstrations, but require permits. The chief just said you can't have 1,000 people get tickets, but you can't have 1,000 people coming down Main Street, it's just not, it's a state road, get the state police out here. I mean, this is a serious thing, this is not going away, you're going to have more of them, and I do appreciate that you're doing the ordinance, I think it's a great idea, but I do think it needs to include, specifically include, these types of protests, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. At this time, we.
Real quick, we're not, we're not approving any ordinance right now, we're just approving, authorizing the Solicitor to draft.
Right, to draft it, we are several steps away from final adoption. So the motion on the table, just to summarize, is to authorize our Solicitor to draft the ordinance. Are any final comments or discussion? Right, hearing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, hearing none, the motion carries 7 to 0. Chief, do you have any other items, or will that conclude?
Oh, sir, that completes my report.
All right, thank you, Chief. Moving on, our next item is our engineer's report.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. All right, so I don't really have any additional updates to the report that was sent out to council at the end of last week, so if anybody has any questions, then I'm happy to answer them, but there's really nothing new.
Any questions for our engineer? Any questions for our engineer from council?
One question, David. Have, have you followed up about the, the EAC letters to gain access to the creek? I know that was an outstanding action item.
Yeah, so that's still being worked on. I believe I saw that some of the EAC members have been working on putting those together, and one got sent to Paula for review, but there's still a few others that need to go out. But we did receive the breakdown of all of the in-kind volunteer hours that were performed up through the end of June, which I needed to be able to send in with the progress report to go through the first reimbursement. So we're, we're moving along with that and definitely hoping to get ASA's first invoice paid sooner than, than later. And then once we get the rest of those letters, the equipment came in, Paula has it, and ASA is, is ready to deploy and install them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else have questions for our engineer on the report?
Oh, one other question, David.
Yep.
The, the report has inactive projects. Are they intended to be active at some point? Or, and obviously, the public can't see the report, but I just want to know what the inactive projects, what we should expect.
So those are included because they are projects that you guys had us initially investigate at one point or another. Partial work was done, and then we received no further instruction, but we kind of keep them there just because we find them to be viable projects that could be picked up if there should be additional funding found, or that if we have another project where those could tie into it, it's kind of just still there for everybody to, to be aware of.
Thanks.
I have a question about the Main and Afton intersection. Well, two questions, actually. Is there like a expected date? Now, I understand you're waiting for the mast arms for the project to be complete?
Yes.
What is that date?
The last the contractor said is that they were expecting to get them the last week of July. I haven't gotten a different update than that. And now that we've kind of made it through all of that, and the green light goes to middle happens, we haven't received the reimbursement yet, but I have a call out to PennDOT to see if they have an update about when they expect us to go through. Because we did get follow-up about our submission. They said that it was complete. They had everything that they needed from us. We're just kind of going back through the project and all of the changes that have occurred. So that's why right now in the report, it says that there is a change of scope coming. So Tom is still reviewing those numbers to assess what aspects of those things that kind of were not part of our original scope accrued in cost and stuff. So you guys can expect to see a formal change of scope in, in the near future, but it wasn't ready to be released yet, but I wanted to give you a heads up.
Okay, so, but is there like, like an overall, I understand there are some things that have to happen, but is there a sense of like how much time, like when this is going to be done, assuming all those things go through as you expect?
I, if the mast arm doesn't come in when it's supposed to, that's like a couple of days' work. It's, they're really close. It really shouldn't be longer.
Okay, and the other question was that there's a, it says that there's still, you're still investigating the pedestrian phase of signaling?
Yeah.
Is there any update on that specifically? Because I know that we were kind of decided to do it the way that it's allowed to be done initially with the idea of getting the process going to creating some sort of pedestrian phase. So we didn't want to hold up the project, but since the project is being kind of a little bit held up, is there any motion on that, that we could incorporate it in the initial phase?
I hadn't really heard anything back from that. When we first investigated about it, they wanted us to put through like a, like a brand new set of signaling. And the transportation engineer that's the lead on the project kind of said to them like, well, we're not that point yet. We just want to know what are all of the options, and PennDOT kind of balked at that. So we're still trying to get out of them, like what else would be the steps if you guys wanted to move forward with those other options? You know, just because they said that it's not something that they typically do, we wanted to know what are like the actual rules so that if we need to prove something, like tell us so that we can do it. But the main thing that came out of that conversation was that we needed to do pedestrian counts. And right now, the level of activity is not typical. And so it kind of made things a little bit wonky to try and justify wanting to do that kind of signal phasing. So it did kind of reach a standstill point, but I can certainly reach back out and see.
Well, what, what doesn't make sense to me about that is that I understand we're dealing with PennDOT, but what doesn't make sense to me is that if the pedestrian count is low, the button gets pressed less often, therefore it affects less traffic. If the pedestrian count is high and sometimes like during the farmer's market and low at other times, like, you know, at nine AM on a, on a Sunday morning, then traffic is less affected. What, what difference does it make if it's button controlled?
So, well, the, what we had asked about doing was not necessarily having it be just button controlled, but having it be phased ahead of traffic. That's what was the big difference, that there would be a purely pedestrian phase so that there could be no turning. If you're still limiting it to just being button controlled, people can still make the left when it's green and the other things. So the idea was to have a pedestrian phase. That's where things changed up a little bit.
But it, but, okay, so the idea of having it be that when the button is pressed, there is no right turn. That is not something that is, I mean, isn't that, I thought that's what the idea that we're trying to do is that you, you press the button, you get a walk signal, and the cars, the cars can't turn because when the walk signal's on, the red light is on when you're crossing. Right? Like, the cars can't turn because they have a red light.
Right.
It's only when the walk signal is, is lit, and the walk signal's only lit when the button is pressed. So that's, is that something different?
Slightly, and it, it kind of depends on how the signaling, and Tom, if you have more details that you can add, feel free to do so.
So the beauty of that, it does, is it doesn't affect traffic, like it's basically is only there according to need. That's why I'm wondering why they would care. Okay, so.
I'm not a hundred percent sure you can do that, Yuri. If you wanna, you wanna give Paula your number, I can have my traffic engineer call you. I want to design the light. He can go through you everything that you are allowed to do. Maybe you guys can work it out.
Sure, that would be great, yeah. Yeah, maybe there's some way, because, because it maybe is a way to avoid the sort of, you know, kind of get a side route to what we're trying to get to, which is essentially not people, not having people run over when they push the button and cross. It's all a minor, a minor thing.
Yeah. So if you want to do that, then I'll have him reach out, and you know, just when you give Paula your number, just give him times that you're available, and I can have Paula.
Sounds great.
Name's Derek.
Okay.
So I'll have him call you, and hopefully you hook up, and you can pick his brain, and he definitely knows the traffic signals much better than Liz or I, so.
Yep.
Okay. I'm good with that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any final questions on the engineer's report? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to some of our project updates.
So I think we just kind of talked about Main and Afton, so that one's kind of covered. And Mary Yardley Bridge, we are pushing forward with the preliminary design, and we are awaiting a date for the pre-application meeting with DEP for our general permit, so that's all moving forward. Saw that there's a fundraising meeting scheduled for this week, so hopefully that is successful, and we continue pushing forward with getting all the funds that we, we need to get the, the project constructed. And then we've got the PICO property. I still haven't seen anything about them agreeing to a meeting, but we're kind of reaching a point where the grant application for the land acquisition, we need to send them the updated documents. So we have to either make a decision that we're going to send it without any kind of a support letter from PICO and, and be okay with that. It's definitely a stronger package if we do have something from them that shows that some sort of negotiation has happened. But again, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the, they did confirm that they will only cover half of the appraisal value, regardless of what the offering price is from PICO. And then.
We did, Liz, I don't know if you're aware, but we did meet with PICO.
Oh, okay.
Last week, so we're waiting on them to come back with an updated appraisal. We told them that ours came in much, much lower, and we're just waiting on that right now.
Okay, yeah, no, I wasn't aware. Awesome, that's great. So, yeah, as soon as we get something back from them, please let me know so that I can give the updated documentation to the grant coordinator, because they did reach out to ask about that. And I informed them that we were in the process of setting a date for that meeting. And then lastly, we probably need to add to the list of projects, North Main Street Phase Two. In my report, I kept it under the ongoing grant opportunities, because that was kind of where we had all the stuff for the North Main Street, but we'd be happy to, to move it up to the project update section. Survey was completed, and we put in the PA Design One Call. I have started to get in documents from all of the, the local utilities. So we are pushing forward with that, and our infrastructure group is working on pulling together a formal proposal so that you guys will be able to take a look and see what the, the true cost will be to get through the bid process of this so that you can kind of see more real numbers and be able to, to plan further. And we can certainly put together more accurate construction estimates as well to kind of help with your future planning.
Can I have a question? I have a question about that. The grant, the $125,000, does that, I, I just forget, does that have a match? And how much of that do you expect to, it doesn't have a match, and how much of that do you expect to, and I know this might come with the proposal, but will be eaten up by the design?
Probably a little more than 50% of that, but not all of it, certainly not all of it.
Okay.
All right. Any other final questions before we move on? Right, hearing none. Thank you, Liz. Next item is our manager's report. Ms. Thompson.
Okay, and as you're aware, the Borough Office did open up on Monday, July 7. Everyone is required to wear masks. Our doors are remaining locked. We do allow people entrance one at a time. This way, we're keeping the masses away, not that we get many, many people. We do have a sign and sheet also that we're requiring everyone to sign in so that if, God forbid, somebody calls and says, "I was in your office yesterday and I was diagnosed positive," we're able to look around and see who else we need to contact as well. So far, everybody's complying. Everybody's happy. Liz, I'm sorry I didn't let you know this, but I did receive from PennDOT notification that they released our $212,000. We should be seeing it in our bank any day now, so I'm happy to say our green light go is, move along fine. Then also, we received four applications for the zoning hearing board that will take place the end of the month on July 27. And that brings me to my next item, which is, two of them are floodplain related. There are additions in the floodplain. So I was going to ask council if they wanted to send the solicitor to defend our floodplain ordinance.
I would think that that would be a good idea.
Yes, this has been our practice in cases where the requested change is not covered under our draft new ordinance, which neither of these are. I would be in favor of sending our solicitor to oppose these applications, and I will make a motion as such.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Thompson, which was seconded by Mr. Ross to have our solicitor represent the borough at the zoning hearing board meeting to oppose the applications that are in the floodplain. Do we have any discussion from council?
Yeah, just a quick comment. In the past, I, I voted no to this, and I'll do so again, not because of any other reason than I'd, I'd rather not take a position as a council, but I'm all for the solicitor being a party, or the borough being a party. So I just wanted to make that clear, why I'm being consistent with pass votes.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Any other comments, question, from members of council? Comments or questions from members of the public? All right, seeing none, then I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Hearing opposed?
No.
And do we have any abstentions? Okay, that motion carries six to one with Mr. Berry voting nay. All right, and Paula, do you have any other items on your manager's report?
No, that is it, sir.
Paula, do we have to extend the, the outdoor dining as well as the fee lenience? Because I know it, it was a month.
We, we were going to discuss that under other items like we did last time.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you for reminding us, though.
All right. Moving on, our next item is our solicitor's report. Mr. Klosser.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I only have one item to review with council, and that is to discuss the possible authorization to advertise the borrowing ordinance related to the line of credit note with First National Bank of Newtown. We discussed this at the last meeting. We have prepared a draft ordinance, which I believe Paula sent out to everyone today for review. We've also received a commitment letter from the bank for the line of credit note. And I'll review the ordinance first. Basically, it would authorize the acceptance of the commitment and the line of credit note and for the purposes of, you know, financing potentially various capital projects in the borough, including renovations to Borough Hall and the Annex Building, the Mary Yardley Bridge project, the sidewalk project, and the acquisition of property, you know, being probably the PICO lot, potentially. So that's what the ordinance would do. Basically, the terms of the note, just to review with council and the public, would be a line of credits, so it would essentially be a drawdown type of a situation. So it would be up to the borough to decide how much of the loan to take down for these projects, subject to a maximum amount of $500,000. And the interest rate would be fixed for the term of the loan at 1.7%. Obviously, that's a historically low rate. There would be a one-year draw period from the closing, so if we closed potentially in August, then you could draw on the note up until August of next year for the projects. And then the payments would begin, and this is slightly different from what's provided in the line of credit. We would, or in the commitment letter, there would need to be a small payment, probably within two years of the issuance date. So probably in August of 2022, there would need to be a $10,000 principal payment. And then in the following years, it would be basically the remainder of the note that's drawn. And I think that really covers the terms. If council wishes to proceed, we would need authority to advertise, and we try to have it ready for the next meeting. So I don't know if there are any questions at this point.
Yeah, let's, let's open up for questions. Members of council, just chime in if you have any specific questions.
Just a basic question. Would it go into effect when the ordinance was? Just a basic question. Would it go into effect when the ordinance was adopted and then signed? Is that when it actually would start?
No, the ordinance would be adopted, and then there's a process. We would need to apply to the State Department of Community and Economic Development for authorization to issue the note. That usually takes 20 days or so. And then following that approval, there would be a closing, essentially a loan closing with the bank where the note would be signed. There'd be a loan agreement. Basically, the same process that we went through a few years ago when we did this with First National Bank. So I would anticipate a closing if council were to proceed at the next meeting, probably in late August. At that point, I think I reviewed this at the last meeting, we would, the borough would be required to draw an initial amount of $50,000 in order to essentially establish the loan closing and fix the rate at that point in time.
Thanks. Right. And then just to clarify from there, after that initial 50, we basically would vote again for each subsequent draw?
Yeah, it would be up to council really to authorize any additional draws, you know, for whichever projects, you know, were deemed to be, you know, necessary for that purpose.
Okay. And that's just the piece I wanted to highlight, that this does not commit us to incurring the full amount of the note.
And again, that draw period under the terms of the commitment letter would be one year from the closing date. So, you know, from August to August of 2021.
We have additional questions from council. Now, on any, I will ask if anyone would like to make a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion.
To advertise?
Yes, to advertise.
Just for clarity. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. McCann to authorize the solicitor to advertise the ordinance for the general obligation note. I know we just did a round of questions, but I'll ask one more time for process sake. Any questions from council?
I don't have a question, just a quick statement. I think it makes a lot of sense. 50,000 is probably something we'll use this year. So it's, it's a reasonable amount. And then any further amounts, as you've stated, will need to be voted on. So I think the risk is, is low that we're not going to spend wildly or, or get into too much debt without thinking it through and being projects we, we all care about.
Right, agreed. And, and I'll just add to that. You know, I know an item I've thought about, and I'm sure everyone else has, is especially regarding the sidewalk, where if we were to get a healthy grant approval, but it might require a one-third match, you know, it would be nice if our one-third was, let's say, 150, $200,000. We wouldn't want to let that other large amount of money go. You know, and at a rate of 1.7, I think it just makes a lot of sense to have this option and give us that flexibility.
Yeah, I definitely think this is the case of making lemons from lemonade from lemons. And we are currently making a payment of between 100 and 150,000 a year on our last sidewalk line of credit. So it will be very comfortable for us to continue making that payment when we start paying this one off. So I think it's well within our means, and it's going to enable us to finish some projects that have been waiting.
Just a quick thing I'd like to maybe just check with the borough manager, Paula, on is just, is, have you discussed tracking, how you track debts like this and how you report to council? Just so that kind, you know, we, not necessarily for an amount this small, but just in the future, it'd be good to have a system that we all have a sense of where we are and how that affects potential cash flow and future expenditures.
Well, I could send you a report on where our finances are at any given time. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Not really. I'm just more looking for the idea that, you know, here's a new tool for us. And we just want to make sure that in the future, we have some sort of a system that we understand that we have these payments to make that historically, we, we haven't had to make. So we, and we, then we factor those into our cash flow. So I think some sort of system where that's in place that, and again, for an amount this small, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not going to be relevant. But in the future, let's say larger amounts are drawn because of opportunities that present themselves. It'd be nice if there was a system that prevented any sort of surprises at some point. And maybe that's something to discuss with the, you know, the accountant or.
Okay.
We can probably draw something up in QuickBooks and just provide fund balance type report for council at every meeting or quarterly, whatever we would want to do. That's similar to what we have done with the current one, but only general government has been receiving those. So we can share them more widely.
Yeah, that might be, that might be good, just to add it to the report quarterly or something like that, just so that there are more eyes on it and less of a chance of a surprise slipping through the cracks. Thank you.
Good point. All right, any further questions from council? Hearing none. Well, questions, comments from the public? All right, I don't see any, so I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries seven to zero. All right, Mr. Klosser, anything else under solicitor's report?
No, that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to mayor's report.
Thank you, Council President. Real quick, just wanted to take a moment and publicly acknowledge Chief Kelly's efforts today in supporting the Yardley Borough on Air Show. He came on, we had a nice conversation for about 20, 25 minutes. And as always, he was an excellent representative of the borough. So I just wanted to publicly thank him for that. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mayor Harding. Moving on to our council member reports, beginning with Mr. Barry.
We kind of had an EAC report earlier when I asked the engineer a question, and they haven't met since the last meeting. For the Reading Ave Committee, though, we, we did meet after the last meeting, the last scheduled meeting. And we reviewed sort of the plan for the future. And the one thing that council should know is that the, the committee doesn't feel that the, the grant opportunity for the acquisition of the Pico lot is, is worth pursuing or should be pursued for the Reading Ave property maintenance and, and upkeep. We think that there might be other grant opportunities to research for that. And I don't think we're ready yet, or the committee's not ready. The committee is gonna plan a little more about what it wants to do and what it feels it can do as a community with maybe a community day, and then maybe some expert advice, and then plan for what it would need to seek funding for. So I think there's a lot more we can do as volunteers, and then focus on some good grants, which will be available every six months, you know. But the land acquisition grant, we, it does not recommend for the Reading Ave property. It's already acquired. And that's, that's my report.
Can I clarify that the grant that's due at the end of the month isn't just for land acquisition? That was just one of the things that it can be used for?
We understand. We just don't, don't think that's worth pursuing at this time and spending resources on when it's not 100% applicable. It's a land acquisition grant, and at the same time, we're still thinking through what we want to accomplish as volunteers first.
Yeah, I totally understand it. I just wanted to make it clear that the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program has a planning side to it, which is not as much money, but a planner would come in and take a look at the parcel and help you figure out how it could be utilized and give you like a, like a plot and kind of show how things could be done. That is part of what that grant also, you know, would, would pay for.
We'll reconsider if, if it seems worthwhile.
Yeah, you definitely still have, have time. As we've said in the past, none of the grant coordinators are super strict about needing to have the resolution by the due date. They always accept them at the, the next meeting or whatever. So we have another meeting before the grant is due at the end of the month. And I can give you more literature if that's what you need to help the conversation with Reading Ave Committee.
Yeah, please do. If there's particular focus on planning and a planner, that's exactly what I think we'd be looking for. Maybe we misinterpreted.
Yeah, there's a, there's a whole section of the grant that's related to that. Yeah, I'll, I'll send you an email.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Barry. Mr. Ross?
Public Works hasn't met since our last meeting, and Liz kind of took care of all the other Public Works issues that are ongoing. So no, no, nothing else to report?
It's an easy, thank you. Ms. Segal-Morris?
Nothing further to add than what Chief already went over. And I apparently missed the airport meeting, so I'll make sure I get emails about the next one when it occurs so we can have an update. So that's it.
Thank you. And you know what? I'll also try to find out over there who's coordinating those meetings now, because I think you and I both were left off the last communication. So we'll try to make sure that we get looped in again. For myself, we spent plenty of time talking about sewers last week, so I'm not going to recap all of that. However, I'm sure most of you probably saw that a injunction was granted from the court against any votes pertaining to the sewer sale in Lower Makefield. So for the time being, that situation is completely frozen. And I will give an update when those pieces start moving again. Ms. Thompson?
Nothing to report this evening.
Okay, Mr. McCann?
Hey, Community Economic Development, we talked a little bit about the fundraising efforts for the Mary Yardley Bridge. We hope to finalize them at a meeting tomorrow and really get wide publicity for the project and raising those funds. And then secondly, we did talk a little bit about the planning commission and their take on the floodplain ordinance they're currently reviewing. So we kind of talked through some of the issues with the floodplain ordinance as it stands now and the planning commission's take on that. So that's my report.
Okay, finally, Mr. Finer.
Yes, Community Outreach Committee did meet today, and we interviewed three candidates for three committee positions. And there'll be more information forthcoming on that. And just a quick shout out of appreciation to David Applebaum and Jeff Buehler for the work they're doing with experience yardly, because considering the fact that so many events are canceled right now, I just appreciate that they are finding ways to continue to engage the community and keep things alive and thriving around here. That's all for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Finer. Moving on, next item on our agenda is discussion items. So this is just an opportunity, if any council member has an item of business that, you know, they'd like to raise for possible future consideration, this is just a good time. You know, I know a lot of us don't like to vote on things when it's the first time we're seeing it. So if anyone has something they want to raise at this time, just chime in.
Do you want to do the parking ordinance here with businesses using their parking lots for outdoor dining here under other business?
Let's call it other business, but since there's no discussion, let's just roll right into that.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to extend our loosening of, of our parking space ordinance for another month, allowing our businesses to use outdoor spaces to serve the public.
Second it.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Segal-Morris, to extend for an additional month the waiver of those parking requirements. Do we have any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? All right, Mr. Applebaum, go ahead.
I just wanted to announce that it's most likely that we will continue with Yardley Restaurant Week at the end of August. So I appreciate the fact that you're extending this because I think it will be critical to the success of not only Yardley Restaurant Week, but also to this recovery period for the restaurants as long as things go as well as they have been. So thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? All right, hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries seven to zero.
And relatedly, I'd like to make a motion to extend the reduced permit fee for outdoor tents for our restaurants.
Second?
For another month, sorry.
Still second.
All right, that motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross, extending the reduced permit fees for an additional month. And we have any questions or comments from council on that item?
Just curious how many permits have been applied for at the reduced rate?
Paula, you're on mute there. I don't know if you know off the top of your head.
Wes, do you know off the top of your head? I want to say it was Continental Vault, Yardley Inn.
Pretty Bird, Tap Room. Country Club, actually, Country Club.
Country Club, never, I didn't see anything.
They actually, they didn't. Theirs was, they're not in the parking lot.
Approximately five.
Yeah.
Great. That's, that's good to hear. It's good to hear. I hope that it was helpful for them. And thank you.
All of our, just about all of our eateries participated with the exception of one who declined.
All right, any additional questions, comments from council?
What are the odds of any other permits being needed? I mean, we can extend it, but is it a moot point at this stage?
Yeah, I don't think anybody else is going to come forth, but you never know. As long as the opportunity's there, if our holdouts want to, then it's there for them. So perhaps this is the last month for that portion of that. Just extend the relaxed parking further.
Right, we still do have some eateries that haven't set up a tent yet. So it's a possibility if they've found that their indoor business hasn't picked up as much as they had liked.
No harm in keeping them linked together.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay, so any questions from the public on that item? All right, seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries seven to zero. All right. And then I believe our next item is in regards to Harvest Day. And I believe we have Mr. Wayne. Take it away.
Hi, council. Thank you for putting me on the agenda. As you know, we canceled this year's event. But, you know, we're thinking ahead to next year. One of the things that we discovered was the Shade Tree Commission planted trees in the field earlier this year. And I want to thank Councilman Finer for giving me the background on that. Tom Wells and I walked the field. He's doing the layouts. He's doing the logistical layouts for next year. And pretty much every tree presents a problem for maximizing use of the field. But we think we can do alternatives and get around them. There are two trees, though, that are particularly problematic. They are the ones that are, are planted the closest to Bell Avenue. Right now, they're off the street about 25, 20 to 25 feet, I would think. I forget the exact measurement. And we heard that the Shade Tree Commission was amenable to moving one of the trees. We would like to see two, the two trees that are closest to Bell Avenue move closer to Bell Avenue to about 10 or 11 feet off the street. This way, it would give enough room for the trees when they get big to have room to grow. It would also. It would also line up with the existing trees on Bell Avenue. It looks kind of weird not being in a line. You want shade for the street, that's not going to happen right now. So those two trees, if we move them closer to Bell Avenue, that would, we could, we could work around them. Right now, where they are, it makes those corners largely unusable of the field. And right now, we depend on those to either put like a kids' event, like a blow-up house, or we put ponies, or we put car show, or we put food. No matter how we move it around, we need those kind of big corners for those things. So what we would like is for council to ask the Shade Tree Commission, and Harvest Day Committee would help with the labor if, if they wish. We're happy to help, just moving those two trees.
Great, and so, so you said Shade Tree Commission, you've already had discussions there?
I reached out, I reached out to Christian Thomas, I did not hear back.
We, we had communications from, through Paul, I believe, that they would move them. They said the fall was the best time, so we have a little bit of time before we need to take action on this. I don't know, Rich, if you could draw up a diagram of exactly where you want them, so there's no signals crossed, and then perhaps we could vote on that at the next meeting. I, I'm, I agree that that they look nice in a line, but I, when I walked by the first time, I wondered how Harvest Day was going to fit everything. So I'm supportive of this, this comment.
It would, it would have been nice if they had asked some of the users of the field before they planted these things, but, you know, you can't change the past.
Yeah, Rich.
For the future, to consider a different process, which, which I think has been, the lesson's been learned.
And Rich, I mean, I was part, I helped out on, I guess it was Arbor Day. It's in November when, when they do the plantings and certainly I, I think they tried to keep it to the sides of the field to kind of not be an imposition, but obviously, I, I, you know, the, it, it seems that they're open to moving the ones that could be problematic. And certainly the fall, I know, is the best time. They like to plant and certainly move trees, so.
Yeah, I, I benefited, you know, this, this, the past two years, I've gotten a tree each year from those guys, so. You know, I think it's a great program that they do in the fall, I think it's awesome.
Yeah, and I think they just saw it as an opportunity to kind of, you know, add some trees in, to that area. I, I don't think there was any intention to imposition the events, and I think they were trying to kind of navigate that too, so just to give them.
The one thing I was really mystified by is why they didn't plant any along River Road? And I guess it's because there's utility lines, I guess. But that would be the area where we really need them.
All right, yeah, so I think in regards to these particular ones, we can initiate a conversation with the Shade Tree Commission. They planted them, so if they're okay with moving them and can give us a little bit of guidance on how that's best achieved, I think that's the way to go here.
All right, I will send you a diagram. Tom Wells drew a scale diagram of the field, and I will put exactly a blue dot, red dot, is where we want to move it.
All right, we'll keep our eyes out for it. Any final questions on this item?
Also, just to let everybody know, September 12th, we are tentatively have the gazebo for the farmer's market. Harvest Day Committee is going to be dispersing funds from 2019 event to our nonprofit beneficiaries. And we will also be giving out t-shirts to anybody who wants them from the past two years. More details will be coming soon.
All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Rich.
All right, that concludes our agenda business for this evening. So unless any member of council has another item they'd like to bring up, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, David, I just wanted to bring up potentially looking for, as we move into green, is there a potential for us to safely meet in person, even if it's just once a month? I, I know it's been running pretty smoothly this way, but I do think we lose something not meeting in person. And maybe there's a potential way to kind of meet safely, whether it be outdoors or maybe in a larger space like the community center. I know the legislature granted this type of meeting, but I know also there's an eventual intent to move back to live meetings, and that's just my thought, so just wanted to kind of bring that.
I think we've talked about this a couple of times now, we can maybe approach the community center about using that space. You know, the obvious constraint with Borough Hall is that those are pretty tight quarters, and we wouldn't really be able to spread out there in a way that's safe. And, you know, I want to avoid a situation where, you know, we had a meeting where lots of people wanted to participate. We wouldn't safely to be able to accommodate everyone. You know, just keeping in mind that we're not fully set up for a meeting where council is live, but then we have people calling in. So I think maybe we could look at the option of the community center, because that is large enough. I think we could safely meet there, but.
We have no live stream capabilities at the community center, so we would be losing all the people who tune in that way.
Yeah, I'll add that, I think it's a balancing act, but there are people in our community that just wouldn't be able to come to a live meeting. And I think that the limited, limitation of access to a live meeting is higher than the limitation of access to a virtual meeting. So to me, that's kind of where the, that's where the balance tips. Until the situation changes, that's kind of where we're at, at the moment, to me, is what it seems like.
Yeah, fair points, and, you know, we are still, under that law permitted to do this, that, you know, the emergency order still is in effect, and for the duration of that, we are able to do these Zoom meetings. So, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Finer and Ms. Thompson, with those two points in mind, I think it probably makes sense for us to stay in this format for now. You know, certainly if we were to have higher profile item come up on council, we could consider, you know, if we needed to do a live listening session in addition to the council meeting that would take place here, I think we could look at that. If we had a, a business item that would warrant that level of discussion. But certainly in the short term, I, I think our plan is to stay in this format. All right, any other final items? Hearing none, well, if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye, everyone.
Good night.
Night, everyone.